This is the meeting of the Carbondale Public Library Board. I'm president. My name is Don Prosser. And I've determined it's not practical to have a meeting in person. And accordingly, the meeting is being held virtually. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted online. I would call the meeting order and ask Roland to call our role, please.
Don?
President.
Susan. Roland here. Barbara?
Here.
Phil?
I'm here.
Joyce?
Here.
Chastity?
Here.
Julian?
Here.
Harriet?
Here.
We do have a quorum. If there are anyone, any visitors that wish to address the board, I would invite them to indicate that now.
Don't see any in the attendee list.
In terms of the president's report, we did have a meeting of the emergency meeting of the emergency policy committee meeting, and they'll be discussed later in the meeting. You do have the secretary's report with the minutes of February as well as certain other minutes, closed session minutes. Have you had a chance to review those matters?
In the minutes of the previous meeting, under financial report number three, I'd like my last name included in the second. Barbara Laban seconded. Do you see that?
As long as we're making some amendments, I noticed that I didn't necessarily include the word "none" after some of the things like new business. So I'll go ahead and change that as well.
In the new business, under other, yeah, this is a very little thing. In the second line, we're patron behavior. The second sentence, one individual was carrying barcodes. It says of off books. So obviously you want off of books or just off books. That's a little. And then a few lines down, well, three lines from the bottom of that patron behavior, where the patron is making loud noises, cussing at the staff. Well, he was being very informal because I think it's cursing. He was probably very formally cursing.
It's a female, Harriet. It's a woman.
Hey, that's right. She.
And I think I would fix that sentence prior to that and make the one sentence attempt to modify her behavior, which includes and then continue on. She continued that singular, and then you said their behaviors in the same.
So I, um, I didn't include gender purposefully in that. So that's, that's the reason, because I'm trying to preserve patron privacy.
Okay, can you change it all then to?
Change everything to their? Okay.
Or they, they have been caught, or I don't know, one or?
I know. We all have trouble with they, you know.
Yeah. Person.
Just because it's plural, you know.
Or used to be. Used to be is right.
Yeah, so it isn't anymore. So.
A new word, completely a new word.
I just find it hard to wear this with what they taught me in school. So I just substitute and don't use pronouns anymore if I can help. That way I can avoid that.
You can just use names. That is a good way to do it. Yeah.
Good idea. Yeah.
That's my strategy. I use names.
That works.
Other than these corrections or changes, are there any other changes that the board would like to consider before moving to adopt the file or the minutes as of, as changed? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the amended minutes?
I move with the minutes as amended.
I second.
Barbara and Harriet, I think she, she beat you, Jane. Is there any discussion? If not, then we'll have a roll call vote.
Don?
Yes.
Susan? Roland, yes. Barbara?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Chastity?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yes.
Those minutes are approved as changed. Do we have any correspondence or communications?
Do you want to go ahead and approve that closed minutes as well?
Good idea.
Okay.
You all have circulated from the director of the close, minutes of the closed session. Is there any discussion with regard to those minutes? If not, we need a motion to approve.
No, I need to correct. I'm not the board vice president.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have two vice presidents. Okay.
Much vice.
Lot of vice, yeah.
Other than that correction, is there any other discussion of the minutes? If not, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Don't move.
Roland moves. Is there a second? I'm sorry, who's second?
Chastity?
Yes, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Don?
Yes.
Susan? Roland, yes. Barbara?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Chastity?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yes.
That motion carries. I jumped ahead a little bit a minute ago. Do we have any communications or correspondence?
No.
That brings us to Gwen's report. You have distributed to today electronically certain bills for the, are due between March 16th and April 15th. Is there a motion to approve those bills?
I'm curious.
So moved.
Item.
We can discuss it, but why don't we move the second at first? Did you move, Julian?
Yes, I did.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, Roland.
Wurdestal toilets?
That is actually a septic tank cleanup. I agree. It's a very specific company name.
Yeah, we have a area that is next to our exterior HVAC unit system that has, that needs to be cleaned out so that we don't have sewage that comes up through the floor in the bathroom.
So the, the, it's not hooked up to the city sanitary sewer?
I'm not sure that I can explain it. We put, this is something that happens occasionally, and the city does come when we have an emergency and they pull, they pull from the, from under the parking lot. But there is an area that, so we're, we're trying to stay on top of it. So we're paying to have somebody come out and, and do that, I think, quarterly. We did have an issue this, a couple of weeks ago. So.
Yeah, I think it's 250 per time. So that's the quarterly and then the other issue. So it'd be, it's, I think it's going to be $250 a quarter for that.
Just to stay in front of it. The city comes when it's an emergency. But we prefer that sewage not come up through the floor at all. So, so that's why we also pay someone to come out and try and stay in front of it.
That almost sounds like the city needs to go and upgrade the sewer system.
Yeah, they do. I mean, they come, they are, you know, I have to commend them for coming out really, really quickly each time that we have called. But yeah, there are definitely that changes that need to be made to that. And I think the, the city is seeking funds to do that. This isn't the only area where, where that kind of thing has happened. I don't know if it's actually like sewage. It's, it's the, it's, you know, it's the water that goes into the, the manholes and the drains and that kind of stuff under the streets.
Storm sewer.
Storm sewer water. Yeah.
Well, that's a little different. The backup of sewer, I mean, I would.
Yeah, that's, that's true. Yeah, but it's, it's gross though. I assure you. Might not be as dangerous as, yeah, as human waste, but.
Well, if we have money in the budget for this, I'm sure the board will be able to approve it. Is there any other questions about the bills to be approved? If not, let's have a roll call vote.
Don?
Yes.
Susan? Roland, yes. Barbara?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Chastity?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yes.
Motion carries. You also have financial reports for the month of February. Is there a motion to approve the report?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second to approve the report. Any discussion?
Listen, second. Barbara, okay.
Is there any discussion with regard to the report? Questions for Gwen?
Another question. What are donations that account for 46,000 some?
That includes all the donations we've received this year. And if you remember, we received a 42,000 anonymous donation. So that's why that's so high. And then the rest is just what patrons have given us. And then, let's see, I think that's.
Harriet? I think Pat has requested that contributions be given to the public library.
Wonderful. Well, that's very, very good. That's very good. Okay. Good.
Are there any other comments or discussions? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Don?
Yes.
Susan? Roland, yes. Barbara?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Chastity?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yes.
Motion is carried. That brings us to your report, Diana.
Okay. Well, you already heard about the water that comes up to the bathroom. That's the only maintenance emergency that I've had this past month. There are of course things that we need to work on. But the COVID-19 procedures, just wanted to let you all know that, yes, the, the committee met and discussed what we wanted to do in terms of COVID-19 procedures that, when the state changed their rules to make masks recommended but not mandatory. And so the committee decided to, to do the same, to make masks recommended but not mandatory because we do have a lot of very tense interactions as it is with people, trying to get them to wear a mask and to wear it properly. And it can be really stressful for the staff to have to constantly have these interactions with people who are sometimes quite confrontational with us. And that also puts us at an additional risk because then a person who's not wearing a mask is yelling at us. So they are then putting it as, as even more risk of catching COVID if they have it. So we did make some accommodations for staff because we definitely don't want to, to put our staff in a situation where they feel that they have to put themselves at risk because they're here at work. All of our staff are continuing to wear masks. And we do have signage up that says that if you need one-on-one service from our staff, then you may be required to wear a mask. We have some staff who are, who would not be comfortable and it would not be safe for them to stand next to someone closely and help a person who's not wearing a mask. So that has been our accommodation. All of our staff are fine with, with that. As far as I know, no one has complained to me. And so far it is, is going well and we're, we're not having to chase people around and, and ask them to wear a mask and let them yell at us. So that has been the change in our procedures. We do still have up the plexiglass as well. I also wanted to talk to you about the social work program.
Back to the COVID, Diana, I'm sorry. How many, what percentage would you say? Are there still people masking and?
Um, yeah, I still haven't seen masks on some people, but the past couple of days, I would say the majority of people in here are not masked. What do you think, one?
I'd say that's about accurate. And there are some people that are just going to continue masking. Most people took it off.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'd say probably I, if I had to guess, it might be 80% of people in here are not masked. And that's of course not including staff who are all masked.
I think we have higher rates than like the grocery store. When I go there now, it's me and two other people that aren't masked. I think we have a little higher than that. Probably because we required masks for so long, but it's got a lot lower.
Right. Yeah, there might be people who didn't notice the size change. And, but if, I think we also, you know, we tend to serve maybe a considerate, you know, population as well. Sometimes are considerate, people who, who come to the library. So that's, that's it with COVID procedures. Do we have any other questions about COVID procedures? Okay. The, I wanted to talk to you about the social work program. I just wanted to give a shout out to Jack Texler, our current social work intern. He actually just got an award from SIU for being the most outstanding non-traditional student. So I, I don't know if that was just department-wide. I think it was, but he has really been kind of going above and beyond for people. I am looking for funding to try and turn this into a full-time position. I am going to apply for ARPA funding through the, the city. I, it just for, for a one-year, you know, beta test of launching a full-time employee. I would like him to apply for that job. But even if it's, even if it's not him, I do feel that we can do a better job if we've got a consistent person in here who can acquire that knowledge over, over the course of time and then pass that on to interns. So if we do are able to hire someone, we will still have an intern ideally as well. So we still have that relationship with SIU and we're still providing that opportunity. But we would have then a licensed social worker on board who is able to, to guide that, guide the interns. And I think we'll, we'll be able to get much better service that way. That is one funding opportunity. I did share with the, one of the grants book people at the Illinois State Library, when they were asking about types of grants that libraries needed. I did share with them that they, that there are libraries that are wanting to do social work types of programs and that several libraries are doing that in innovative ways and that that is probably something that libraries would, would be looking for funding for. They're very excited and they passed it along to a couple of colleagues who also were very excited about that. So I do think that might be a possibility. I know that that's on their radar. It's certainly not a done deal. But it is a possibility that they might be able to find funding for that as well, since that is on their radar. And anything I can do just to get, just, you know, particularly if I can, can get this particular intern upon graduation, that, that will have a higher quality of service that we can offer. So any, any ideas from the board? I would welcome any ideas about how to, to fund that. I'd at least like to get it going for the first, for the first year and then figure out how to fund it in the future.
How many salary dollars do you need?
I would pay $20 an hour, which is what we start our, our librarians at. And so with salary and benefits, the cost for one year is about $52,000.
Okay.
Would the university be at all interested in sharing part of that cost if that person were to mentor interns?
Um, I, as far as I know, no, it's not like we're the only program that they have that has social work interns. They work, they have social work interns placed throughout the community. So as far as I know, no, I could look at maybe the SIH Foundation and some other local foundations potentially as well. And of course, we've got donation funds too, so.
The city at all in the picture?
Um, I have not, other than, other than I will apply for ARPA funds, I have not. You know, we've tried to keep ourselves in that, you know, kind of separation of church and state. So it's not the really, we're not church and they're not state. But, but you know, to, to keep that, to keep from blurring those lines, you know, we're a discreet component. You know, we're not directly under the city. We're not city employees. But, but they are, but I did mention, you know, to this, to the city manager and the mayor, that that is something that we really would like to see happen here at the library so that if they do come across funding opportunities and that kind of thing, we are on their radar. So hopefully they would pass that information along to me. And I'm sure the same thing would be true of the school for social, school social work at SIU. If they found a good opportunity, I'm sure they would pass that along to me as well. Any additional questions about social work? Okay.
I have a question. You mentioned that you thought this would be comparable in terms of salary to starting librarian is that I'm not familiar with what social workers are paid. Is this comparable? Is that what they're paid?
I think it is, from what I can tell. And it's, you know, they're coming at it with a master's degree, as are our librarians. So that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm seeing anyway. As, you know, when I just search for social work jobs and that kind of stuff, it's, that's about what I'm seeing. So, so that's my plan. I mean, it's, that's, it's not set in stone. It could be amended. But that's what I'm, what I'm thinking. So. So I wanted to talk to you about library fines and fees. And as I said in my, in my board report, the reason I want to discuss this is that we, our, our numbers for juvenile cards are very low. They're higher than, I ran a second report and found that they're higher than what I reported to, but they're still low. And I know that's, that a lot of kids are using their parents' cards, but still, I, I would really like to be able to work with the school district to do a memorandum of understanding and to be able to work with them, hopefully, to allow us to, to get kids registered when they register for school, to make that part of the school registration process. So not just us sitting at a table and being available, but make that part of the school registration process. And make it more of a, I would prefer to make it more of a opt-out than an opt-in. That way, when, where we, they're already in our database. I think that the system, system can probably work with me to pull those records over and make it a duplicate record that is a public library record. And that way, if kids come in, you know, for a tour with their teachers, for example, they could check out a book. And I need to work out the details of, you know, whether that's a full access card or whether that's a temporary card or a, a limited access card, which some libraries are doing with, where the parent hasn't been in here to present an ID. For example, we could have a limited five or 10 books or something along those lines. But I think the first step is that we need to think about, about the fact that we are fined, we do have fines, overdue fines on children's and teen materials. So I, I don't think, I think that we would have a lot of pushback from the community because they have a fear of, of fines and fees. And when I look at the fines and fees that we do collect on children's and teen materials, it's, it's about 3,000 tops for, it's under 4,000 a year. It's three to 4,000 total. And if you told me that there was a database that I could buy that would allow me to very quickly increase my juvenile card holders tenfold, and that database was only about $3,000, I would buy it in a second. So it's not, it's, it's revenue that I have not budgeted for us to take in, in the past two years. So I know that we can handle it. And I know that it's a real deterrent to, to families who are afraid of accumulating those fees. And we have a lot of poverty in Carbondale. We, I gave you some, some statistics on that, but poverty in this town is really high. So I wanted to show you a TED Talk that I watched that was very inspirational. And I think it will answer some of the questions that boards tend to raise about fines on juvenile materials. So I'm going to go ahead and share that with you. Okay?
Sure.
Thanks.
Hello, friends. I'm happy to see all of you here today. This is actually exactly what I say to the people who visit us at the La Crosse Public Library. And I say it because I mean it. The children who come into our library are my friends in that I care about their needs and their futures. I want them to be happy and successful. I hope that they'll find great books or a movie that delights them or the solution to a tricky problem. Libraries in general have this wonderful reputation of really caring about our communities. We put out mission statements and statements of purpose that say that we connect our community to.
Pause that for just a second and we will try again.
Maybe try just restarting the whole video.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
It might be frozen.
Try and start again. Sorry about that. And if not, I'll have you just watch it on your own time and we will.
All of you here today? This is actually exactly what I say to the people who visit us at the La Crosse Public Library. And I say it because I mean it. The children who come into our library are my friends in that I care about their needs and their futures. I want them to be happy and successful. I hope that they'll find great books or a movie that delights them or the solution to a tricky.
Are you seeing and hearing it okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Key problem. Libraries in general have this wonderful reputation of really caring about our communities. We put out mission statements and statements of purpose that say that we connect our community to the broader world. We engage minds. We create lifelong learners. And these ideals are really important to us as libraries because we know the power they have to create a better world. A more connected world, a more engaged and empathetic world. Books have power. Information has power. And for the powerless in our communities. And for the powerless in our communities, being able to connect to that is even more important. In 1995, Betty Hart and Todd Rizley published a study that found that working class families and those being served by welfare experience what we now refer to as the 30 million word gap. Essentially, what they learned is that children in these families are hearing so many fewer words each day that by the time they are three years old, there's this enormous disparity in their learned language. And that gap in words follows them as they enter school and it results in later reading, poorer reading skills, a lack of success overall. Children need to hear words every day and they need to hear not just our day to day conversation, they have to hear rare words. Those outside the common lexicon we share of around 10,000. I'm going to read you a short snippet from a children's book by one of our favorite authors in the children's room, Eric Carl. Some of you might know his work, The Very Hungry Caterpillar, but this is from slowly, slowly, slowly said the sloth. Finally, the sloth replied, it is true that I am slow, quiet and boring. I am lackadaisical, I dawdle and I dilly-dally. I am also unflappable, languid, stoic, impassive, sluggish, lethargic, placid, calm, mellow, laid back and well, slothful. I am relaxed and tranquil and I like to live in peace, but I'm not lazy. Then the sloth yawned and said, that's just how I am. I like to do things slowly, slowly, slowly. So you can see from this very brief example from one book in our library, how Eric Carl used 20 different words to get the same idea across to children. Now we know that a lot of the families visiting us at the library, a lot of our friends are struggling financially. We know that some of them are living in poverty and don't have enough to eat or anywhere safe to live. We know that our friend James, who comes in after school and is staying at a local shelter, isn't reading at grade level and has probably never read at grade level. We know we have that 30 million word gap and a corresponding achievement gap by the time kids enter the third grade, both of which directly correlate to income level. So what's the responsibility of libraries in addressing these gaps? How can we help our friends be more successful, more educated and someday better global citizens? It starts with ensuring free and equitable access to everything libraries offer them. Books level the playing field by exposing children of every socioeconomic background to words. At the library, we provide programs that are based on the five tenants of early literacy, playing, singing, talking, reading and writing. We offer programs for adults on computer classes and job skills training. Business startups. We do all of this great work for our community members and at the same time, we counteract it by charging fines and fees of our patrons. Today in La Crosse, 10,000 of our users are unable to check out library materials because of fines and fees. If we narrow in on our neighborhoods experiencing the most poverty, those were 82% of the student body is considered economically disadvantaged. The number rises to 23% of the neighborhood. And these are local numbers, it's true, but they hold true nationwide. In libraries across the country that charge fines, the poorest neighborhoods have the most number of people blocked from use. In fact, the Colorado State Library was so worried about this, they published a white paper. And they stated unequivocally that it's the fear of fines that keeps poor families out of libraries. A colleague of mine took a ride in a Lyft in Atlanta last year and he started chatting with his driver about libraries, as we do. And she told him she grew up visiting her local library, she loved it. But now that she's a parent with three children of her own, there's no way she would allow them to get a library card. Because of the strict deadlines libraries impose. She said it would be like another credit card that I can't pay. Meanwhile, when other libraries have experimented with eliminating fines, like one in San Rafael, that took away children's fines. They had 126% increase in child card applications within the first few months. When people aren't afraid of the fines they might accrue, they line up to access what we have to offer. So what are we telling people then? We have these two disparate ideas. On the one hand, we're champions of democracy and we claim that we are there so that every citizen can educate themselves. We're advocates for the power early literacy has to reduce that achievement gap and eliminate the word gap. We tell people, we're here to help you. On the other hand, if you're struggling financially and you make a mistake, the kind of mistake that anyone in this room could make. Your tote bag that belongs to the library sits by your back door for a couple of weeks longer than it should. You lose a CD, you spill your coffee on a book. Suddenly, we're not here for you so much anymore because if that happens, we're going to make you pay for it. And if you can't pay for it, you're out of luck. I have been a librarian for a lot of years and in the past few years, I myself have paid over $500 in late fines. Now you might wonder why, I mean, I'm there every day and I certainly know how the system works. But like all of our friends at the library, I am busy, I lose track of things. My house is sometimes messy and I have lost a DVD or two under the sofa. And I have been fortunate enough to be able to pay that $500 over the last several years, if not happily. I at least had the means to do it. So is that fair and equitable service if some of us can pay our fines and continue to operate as we always have? And others of us make one mistake and no longer are welcome back? It's simply not. Now, why would we continue to operate under a model that hurts our most vulnerable patrons the most? There are reasons. There are reasons like responsibility. There are some libraries that really feel that it's our job to teach people responsibility. And they haven't figured out that there might be ways to do that that don't equate to dollars. There's also this idea that we share the resources collectively in a community and so we have to take turns. If I keep my My Little Pony movie for too long and somebody else wants to watch it, it's not fair. And then there's the money. Community members often love their libraries and they don't want us to not be able to sustain the services we offer. Luckily, we can address all of these things in a variety of ways without scaring away our most vulnerable populations. Some libraries have gone to a Netflix model. You might be familiar with this, you check things out, when you're done with them, you return them. If you don't return them, you can't check more things out, but once you do, it's all forgiven, it's fine. You can check out again. Others continue to charge fines, but they want to offer alternatives to their library patrons. And so they do things like food for fines, where you bring in canned goods or read away your fines, where you can read off your fines. There's even another library in Wisconsin that offers scratch off tickets at their counter. So you can scratch off and get 10% off or 20% off your fines that day. And there are amnesty days. One day a year, you bring back your late materials and all is forgiven. There was a library in San Francisco that did an amnesty day last year and they welcomed back 5,000 users who had been blocked. That same day, they received more than 700,000 items that were overdue. Among them was one book that was 100 years overdue. So I know that sounds ridiculous, but I experienced that people will stay away from the library rather than face the authority of the librarian when they have late items. As Michael might have mentioned, I've been a librarian for 15 years and my mom hasn't been in a library in decades. Because when she was young, she lost a book. So these are great baby steps, but they don't go far enough because they make people jump through hoops. They have to come on the right days at the right times, they might have to have extra food to share. They want to read away their fines, they need to be literate. If we want people to use the library again, we should just get rid of fines altogether. Now you might think I've forgotten that money piece where we need to finance libraries, right? But there's a couple of things to consider when we think about how fines function in library budgets. The first is that fines have never been a stable source of revenue, they've always fluctuated. And in fact, they've continued to go down over the last few decades. When the recession hit especially, people's ability to pay was hit as well. So for a lot of those 10,000 friends that we've got at the library that aren't able to use it, they might never be able to pay us. When we talk about eliminating their fines, we're not losing money so much as the idea of money. And thirdly, you might be surprised to know fines on average nationally are about one and a half percent of a library's operating budget. Now that can still be a lot of money. If you're looking at a large library or a large library system, the dollar amount can be high. But it's an achievable cut for most libraries to absorb. And finally, and maybe most importantly, fines cost us money to collect. When you start to factor in all of the ways that we collect fines, supplies like mailers that we send out to remind people of their fines. Uh, services like collections, management services, even telephone and email notifications can cost libraries money. And staff time is a huge cost for libraries. So that our frontline staff is standing there, talking to people about their fines, sometimes arguing with people about fines. When we eliminate all of those pieces, if we got rid of fines, we might actually save money in our libraries. Or at the very least, we would be able to reallocate our staff time to pursuits that better fit those missions we talked about. The other thing I want everybody to come away understanding is that fines don't actually work to do what we think they do. The debate about fines, whether we should find, how much we should find, it isn't new. We've been talking about it for almost 100 years. As long as that book was overdue. Study after study has shown that the reason libraries fine is because of strongly held beliefs about the effectiveness of getting materials back on time backed by no evidence. Basically, we find because we've always fined. So the best option for your libraries is to put their mission first. And they will do that if their community members ask it of them. When you leave here, I hope you'll visit your public library and talk to your librarians. Talk to your neighbors and community members who serve on library boards. Tell them that you know how important literacy is to everyone in your community. That if our libraries are truly for everyone, that they have to get rid of fines and embrace their entire community. Thank you.
Wow. Something. That was something, yeah.
Um. What do you think?
I think your idea is great to remove the fines in the beginning from juvenile and young adult. Because if, if it's, if half of what she says is true and, um, I, I, I think, and then carefully monitor it. And so you have some statistics to compare with the past. But I was really enthusiastic about that, so I vote yay. I know other people are going to bring up the disadvantages and there may, but there may be a few, but I think it's a great idea. And, and I, I mean, I'm shocked to see the proportion of poverty. I knew, I knew in general, but when you see the actual numbers, yeah. And, and also to link it to when they register for school in the very beginning, kindergarten to go, that's really good. Like we sign up for other things in the, you know, the beginning, driver's license, which right to vote and all that, you know? So I, I heartily support that idea.
Diana, how would it work at the high school level when we get people from El Pointe and outside the city?
Right, that's a good question. So, um, I would like to start with District 95 and, and then work with District 165. Um, but the laws in Illinois, um, recently changed, um, to, uh, allow us to provide non-resident cards to people who, uh, to, to students, um, kids and students who, um, are at a poverty level, um, and cannot afford a non-resident fee. So, um, so we already, that would take care of a lot of, of who those, who those folks are, who would normally be able to pay a non-resident fee to us. But we currently only have six juvenile non-resident cards, so that's not going to be a big, um, issue in terms of, of our revenue. And those kids probably also are, you know, their, their whole family's signed up, so their parents also have cards. So we wouldn't even be losing that, that's just the, um, the, uh, card that they got because their, um, their families signed up. So, um, we, uh, when you do a, uh, agreement, I, like an intergovernmental agreement or, or an MOU, um, with a school, um, the state does allow you to, um, to not charge non-resident fees. That brings in, um, the students who are non-residents as well, so there's no, there's nothing illegal about doing that.
I really like the idea of an amnesty day. Perhaps with the launch of, um, no fees, um, we could also do that. I think the success of that would be pretty dependent on, uh, getting the word out, you know, publicizing it in a way that everybody knew, hey, if you bring your materials back, um, on this day, no, no fees. And from this day forward, um, we're not charging fees for certain, you know, certain age groups.
You have had some amnesty days in the past, haven't you?
Well, we have, um, a Wednesday night trivia question where if you get the question right, we give you $2 credit towards fines. Um, and you can accumulate up to $10 with the credit and people enjoy participating in that. I've not done an amnesty day, I do really like what you just said, Phil, um, about, about doing it with like a big launch. Like, so we have an amnesty day and we're not longer charging, uh, fines and fees on children and, and young adult materials. I, um, I don't want to be entirely dependent upon an amnesty day because I, I think what that, what happens, um, is that people then go, oh, this book is released late, I'm just not going to use the library for the next six months. And then I'll go and turn this book in on amnesty day.
Yeah.
And then I don't have the book back, so.
That's my, loss of materials is actually my greater concern than loss of revenue.
Yeah, and.
You know, because there's, there are certain kinds of things that you would hate to have go missing, things that are irreplaceable. So, um, that's kind of the only downside I see, otherwise I, I totally support this as, uh, I think the, the information that we were given there, um, you know, certainly makes the case for, she didn't talk about loss of materials, but.
She didn't, but from what I'm hearing from, I've seen a few presentations at conferences on this. It doesn't increase the loss of materials, if anything, you might even get more materials back because people aren't worried about having to come in and pay the fine.
Yeah, one thing to note is when you return an item, you'll still have to pay a $5 overdue fine. So if you have five books, even after you get rid of all the big fines, you'll still owe $25. So it actually might result in more people returning it because some people are like, I can't afford $25, so why bother returning the books?
Right, because each, right now, the fines that are on each item, um, are, there's a $5 limit. Once you've accumulated $5, doesn't go above that. But when you consider the fact that people come in here and check out multiple books, um, it, you can easily end up with hundreds of dollars just in fines. And then you just never use the library again. Um, and we do allow people to pay off those fines slowly. Um, the, you know, that was a change that, that this board made a few months back. Um, to, because it's something we were having to do in practice, otherwise a person would just never show up again, you know? And we don't want to tell someone, particularly a child who's standing in front of us wanting to check out a book that, I'm sorry, you have to pay off all $125 right now, um, that you owe because your mom checked out a stack of books for you and, and they were, um, two weeks overdue and so you accumulated a lot of fines on, you know, that. So it's, $5 doesn't sound like a lot, but it is a lot when it's, when you're talking about a stack of materials. Um, I looked at, um, lost books among juveniles and I found, um, very, very few. Um, and I was looking back through multiple years. Um, I think the most I ever saw, someone had lost, some, someone with a juvenile card had at some point, long ago, lost 15 books. They probably moved away, um, and we never got those books back. But apart from that, I'm seeing one, two, three, maybe four ever in the, in the lifetime of that, um, of that card. Um, so it's not something that we see. of that card. So it's not something that we see a lot. When people, most people who do find amnesty in the, locally, the ones I've seen, they will charge still for an overdue, for for a lost book. But we try to, when people tell us that they lost a book, we search for it, we tell them to search for it. And then we tell them, don't pay for it yet, we're gonna renew it, and we want you to to look again. Because often, as soon as they pay it, that's when it shows up. So you you know, you can still charge for for books that never come back if you if you wanna go this route. And and we could still work with people to to pay that off slowly as as needed as well. But it's, it it's from everything that I've seen, doing a fine amnesty does not result in in more lost books. If they're gonna steal a book, they're gonna steal a book. If they're gonna lose it, they're gonna lose it. It's not gonna be because of the fines. It's it's not, there's not a correlation from what I understand.
So I had a question. I think it's a really good idea, like the the schools, tying the schools in. So like, let's say like a summer program brought in a group of kids, will the children be able to get a card then without a parent? Or maybe I'm thinking like the summer program could have like the permission slip signed, and then when the kids come in, they could get a card. Is that something that could be done?
Well, the way that I, that I'm currently thinking of it, and tell me if this, you know, answers your question or not, if you're thinking of something else, is that they really would already have a card. They would just need someone there to say, this is this child. So if they're there, you know, with, if they're a District ninety-five student and they're there with the Boys and Girls Club or they're there with their babysitter, or they're there with their parent or their teacher, that adult, it just has to say, okay, this is, you know, this kid, this is this kid, this is this kid. And then we can go ahead and look them up based on on that adult supervision. They don't, they don't really have to have a physical library card. They just would need to have a parent with them. And I would need to work out with the schools how it is that when you're in school, how do they identify their students? We do have the ability to take a photo, we do have webcams and the ability to add a photo to a child's account. So we would be able to do that and then recognize that child's face when the child's standing in front of us. Or, you know, I don't think District ninety-five does school IDs unfortunately, so we wouldn't be able to use that. But if they're there with an adult, the adult could tell us who they are. And if they're, and then if if they want us to take their picture, we would be able then to identify that child from a photo afterwards. So they won't really have to have a physical card.
I have a question or two about how this might work. If one of these cards is used to borrow books from outside our library and they're not returned, what is our obligation to that other institution?
When, and this is true of any library card, when somebody, when one of our patrons borrows a book from another library, if it doesn't get returned, that other library can send us a bill and we have to pay it. And we do pay out probably about a thousand dollars a year in in lost materials. And the same thing goes, we can, we could also do the same and and ask for people to, ask other libraries to pay us. The idea is that that are, we are supposed to be collecting that money from our patron. So, and then and then we pay that other bill. Now you could you know, we haven't worked out a, worked out an intergovernmental agreement. We could make it kind of a limited card and say, no interlibrary loan. Of course, if they're, if they, if they walk into Murphy'sboro with a parent, the parent says, here's my library card and here's this kid, and they're a Carbondale Public Library Patron, then they very well might check out card from a library that, check out a book from a library that they walked into, unless we have that set up with like a note on the record saying they can't. So that is something to consider in creating that intergovernmental agreement is whether or not we wanna see any limits on those cards. But really, it's not any different right now. If a parent comes in and gets a card for their child, they can order books from other libraries or walk into other libraries and use that card. So it's not, I mean, the only additional risk is just that we'll, we will increase our patron base, our juvenile patron base tenfold. So it's not, it's really not any different than than your normal liability. It's just, it's just the liability of success.
Well, I appreciate that, but as everybody on the board knows, I've been on the board for a long time. I remember that, and it's been probably several years ago, we were debating about whether or not we would have limits on the number of checkouts from each card. And the rationale for that was that in the spring, you or the librarians would report to us that parents would come in and check out fifteen, twenty books and never come back.
Yeah.
And they would just vacate the community because they were leaving for other work. And then we would have this loss. Now, I don't, I I've heard you say, Diana, that that's not a problem with juvenile cards. And I don't know whether you looked at it from the whole family concept, because we didn't have a lot of that. But I do remember that this has not been something that hasn't been an issue in this community before. So I just bring that up and ask for your feedback on it.
Didn't we have that, didn't we, at that's, that meeting, we had limited the number of books that people from out of Carbondale could borrow? Because there was a family from Anna that was coming up here and borrowing the materials, and we're depriving our own kids of the material. I think we set a limit at that meeting.
There is no limit in place at this time. And I'm not aware of there ever having been a limit. So if that was in place twenty years ago or something, it's not something that transferred to our current database. And some, but some libraries do set a limit. I I will just say that I have, it is rare that I've seen people leave with a big stack of books. And I'll also say that our our book purchasing budget is healthy. And that, that's, that is the cost of doing business. And I will say too, which I've said this on Library List Services many times, we are here to get the books to the people, not to protect the books from the people.
That was a situation where this family was homeschooling their kids. And they were taking out this material and, you know, and and it sort of got out of hand. You know, Donna and I, and I think Harry were on the board at the time, and we had discussion. And I I remember that we had set a limit, you know, on, because this is a family from Anna, okay? And and so, you know, obviously, it's not a problem now. Otherwise, you would be bringing it up, so.
And reciprocal borrowing is is part of the beauty of the being in a library system. A lot of our patrons are coming from from other libraries and our patrons go to other libraries. So I mean, it's, you know.
Well, that brings me to another question, whether we give, and you suggested maybe there might be a limit on juvenile cards or whatever. But we haven't, that's something for you to think through, I understand, before you get there. But will these cards then be available in other communities?
Give me a little bit more about your question, what you're asking.
If we issue a juvenile card to Chuck, who's eleven years old, can Chuck then go into Anna or Murphy'sboro or Marion or whatever and check out books on that card? I think they could, couldn't they?
Normally, yeah. Normally, if you, that would be a reciprocal borrower. So just like if a kid from Murphy'sboro comes over here with their library card, they can check out items from here. So yeah, normally that would be the case.
I think in general, fines follow the item. So I think overdue fines from other libraries' books would still apply. I'm pretty sure.
That is, so
I might be wrong.
Technically, no. But but some libraries would like us to do it that way. So would like us to do it so that if their patron walks in and we're checking out items to them, that are somebody, so that what they prefer is, what what some libraries have expressed a preference for is that if someone in Carbondale, a Carbondale patron, and let's say we're fine-free on juveniles, and they check out some juvenile materials that they borrow from Marion, for example, there are some libraries that would say, we would like you to charge our fines to your patrons. Now, we don't send those fines to those other libraries. We only do that if it's a huge fine. And in most cases, I just tell them, go pay it at your home library if it's not our patron. But according to the way that the agreement is written, no, it, if if our patrons are fine-free on, if our, if our items are fine-free on juvenile materials, we don't technically have to charge other people's fines. So we are not supposed to waive fines in general on other people, you know, from other, from other places. But so yeah, there, it's a little bit of a technical gray area because there's not a lot of agreement on it. But that, but apparently, the way they agree means, I only know that just because it came up in a list serve, the director's list serve somewhat recently. And there were a couple librarians who were like, we really wish that those fine-free libraries would go ahead and charge fines if someone is borrowing our materials. But the the answer is, is that they don't have to.
So if I, so I know you just talked about this, but let me understand, but this is also years ago. Keep this in mind. We used to go to Marion, and we could only, the children could only take out five books at a time on their card. Is that still true? That certain libraries can limit?
So that would be Marion's policy, if that was the case. So yeah, we can set, like, you can set limits on your reciprocal borrowers if you want to. You can set, you just can't, you can't discriminate. So you can't, you can't set limits on your non-resident cards that you don't have on your resident cards. People pay for those cards, so they get the same kinds of services. But you could do like a limited access, like you 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 could set limits if you wanted to, or you could also say that you won't let your, your cardholders check out more than a certain number of of items from other libraries. We don't really have any of those, any of those limits on our patrons. And Murphy'sboro has some limits on their, on their patrons. And some, sometimes when we have a Murphy'sboro patron in front of us, we'll get a message that says, this person can't check out anymore. They've already checked out the maximum number of of stuff. But I must definitely have people, parents, who come in here with their kids and check out, you know, eighty books. And it don't lose them. I mean, it's, it's just not that often. I mean, people occasionally will lose a book, but it's, it's not, that's not really so much the problem.
Well, let me ask you another question. I don't wanna be a, I'm confused about something. If a child checks out a book and it is due back in two or three weeks, whatever the return date is, what happens when it doesn't come back?
They'll get an overdue notice and
Be saving any money about collecting anything if we're sending, sending things or having telephone calls of people. I mean, the lady's presentation was appealing, but I thought a little bit confusing in that how we're going to save money if if people are, do we just say, you're on your honor to bring it back when you want? I'm not sure what we're doing with that.
The majority of our overdue notices are electronic and automated.
Okay.
So it's not cost, so so we're not really spending a lot of money. Now, we can do a mailed overdue notice. And currently with fines, we do charge the, for that postage. But most of our overdue notices are not, are not paper anymore. So we're not charging postage. So so yeah, not, but you would still do, you would still do the same overdue process. You would, and you would still charge people for books that they lose. It's really just overdue fines.
Okay, let me ask.
For myself, I'm all in favor of trying this as an experiment. And I think that's the way I would view it. But I'd want your guidance about how many materials you think people should be able to check out on these particular cards. And the reason I think that is, I see this as potential for abuse, not necessarily by any particular group, but just because we do have a sense of responsibility that is imposed by fines, even if they're unfairly, the burden is less painful to some than others. I appreciate that, but there is a sense of responsibility. If we just say, there are no fines, I would not think this would work well for people my age. And the reason I say that is, I listened to the woman say that she has five hundred dollars of fines, and she's in the business. Every day. And if she can't keep track of her stuff, then somebody like me, who's even older and maybe less confused, less interested, might, I just see it has potential. But we're not talking about the whole system, even though I think, I've heard you say, Diana, that you might think that's the right way to go. But I would like to start us with at least a years per experience in the Carbondale community, see what happens. And I think doing it with juveniles and children has a lot of appeal. I certainly agree with you. We ought to be appealing to young people and getting them into the library. And if we can do this, and this will help, I'm not sure it's gonna give you quite the the bang for the buck that you think it is. In fact, I will be surprised if you have a big enrollment with this or in terms of participation, but I hope to be surprised. But having said that, speaking for myself, who's an old codger, I I I think that it's an experiment that I wanna see in reality. I I read your Colorado report, and there was a lot of data that wasn't there. In fact, over and over again, the Colorado report says, we don't have any data about this. And I noticed she was referring to that same report. So again, I think that it might well work in our community like it did in some suburban Illinois communities that she, they were referring to in the Colorado report. But we are not suburban Chicago, so I wanna see how it works here.
Oh, and there are actually a lot of libraries down here that are doing this. So.
Well, let me come from a different angle. Okay, do we have a handle on how many pieces of material are out that's overdue at any given time? Do we know how many chronic, how many people who are chronically being fined, you know, is it five people, ten people, a hundred people? Are we out missing two thousand pieces of material or twenty thousand, or we be only two hundred? Do we have any of that data?
That data is available.
Because that will give you an informed method of coming, you know, at a, at at how the parameters that you wanna set.
It is kind of hard to quantify because when you look at like, say, you can run a report that says lost items, but it's gonna show you every item that's been lost in the system, years and years and years. So it's kind of hard to quantify that by year. But maybe we could work with Phil Ers.
But but let's not look at loss and say, how do we at any time know how many pieces of material that is late?
I am not sure about that one. I have not, I looked through, there's two different ways for us to run reports. And I looked through both of them and wasn't able to figure out how to run a report that says that, but there might be a way. Gwen, are you aware of a way?
There's one report called Long Overdue, which is not just overdue, but overdue for quite a long time. So we can look at, take a look at that and see what it represents.
But just to see, like, on our patrons, how many people have fines?
That we can run very easily, like how many are charged and how many are paid by month or by fiscal year. Because we, we looked at that. It's just harder to quantify it by, say, juvenile versus altogether. But we could definitely look at an altogether one.
But I I I know that would give us data, but I also feel like the point Diana's trying to make is that she's trying to bring in children who don't have library cards. And what stops them from getting a library card is the fact that their parents or them don't wanna get a library card because if those fees come, they can't pay the fees, like literally. For some of us, five dollars is nothing. But for some other families, that five dollars is, I'll never have that five dollars.
Process. I can't understand how you cannot tell your children that, hey, you know, you checked out some material, it's due in two weeks or three weeks, let's go and have a calendar somewhere that, you know, on a refrigerator or whatever, mark the date that stuff is due. I mean, how difficult is that? I mean, that is, you know, that to me is child rearing, you know.
I don't think that they won't do that. I, I just think that they, um, I think they're not getting a card for that particular reason. I'm not, I mean, I think that the families will check out the card, they'll look at the date, they'll bring the books back. That's my personal opinion. But I think what's stopping them from getting a card in the first place, and those children being able to get books, is the fact that the fines are present.
That's certainly the, the theme that the Colorado report, the Addis Reed says. And I think it's, it's logical that, that, that makes good sense to me, Chastity. That's why I'm in favor of this as an experiment. But I, I would suggest this, before we do this, I would like you to explore this with District ninety-five. And, and see what, what they're willing to do with you in cooperation. And then make a proposal to the board that uh reflects what your staff thinks is the right way to go. And I'm sure the board is likely to follow that recommendation, cuz I think the sense of us is all that we'd want children to have free library service. That's, I don't think that's a problem. I think the concern is, is how it should be structured in a way that's not gonna be abused, is all I'm concerned about.
Yeah, because if I can get it to, and I, I can't assume that I can, but if I can get it to where it's part of the, the school registration process. That means we'd have fifteen hundred new cards involved.
I'm in favor of, of that. Uh, the other question I have is, uh. Do these elementary schools have libraries that they can check out books?
They have school libraries in District ninety-five, yes.
Okay, so I mean, it's not as if the kids cannot, it's not, uh, I do not know that, that, you know. The process of checking out a book and returning it because they got it at their school. So, you know, I really don't believe that is gonna be a problem with, with them returning books. And I do know that a lot of libraries are eliminating late fees and all that stuff, you know, uh, uh, but anyway.
Well, I can, I can reach out to District ninety-five and kind of work out some of, what some of those details would be. Um, as long as I, you know, I mean, i- if we're gonna, if we're gonna find kids. Then I, then I think that is gonna be a real structural problem if we're gonna have.
I agree.
So, um, yeah, on any kind of, in any kind of quick registration. Um, but I can work, I can work with the school district and see what we can come up with. Um, as far as a, um, intergovernmental agreement with the assumption that, that if we can get that going. We can eliminate those fines so that that won't be a barrier and won't, won't create, um. A, uh, create havoc for families who can't afford to pay library fines. Okay.
I think there's a consensus in favor of the idea, and I don't think there's a problem with getting rid of fines either. As long as it's got the protections that you're thinking about. I'm not sure that I think of that way about adults, but we're not dealing with that yet, so.
All right, um, I don't have anything at the moment in terms of other, so that is it for my report.
Well, just to be fair, we leave that, your plan is you'll explore this and bring something back to us to deal with. Is that where we're at? Very good. Okay, uh. Do we need to approve the emergency policy committee minutes now?
I thought we did that.
Well, we did a closed session minutes as well as whatever, but this shows on my agenda approval of the February twenty-three, twenty oh-two. Twenty twenty-two emergency policy committee minutes. Do we need to approve those?
Yeah.
I will move that we approve those minutes. Is there a second?
My second.
Is there any discussion of those minutes? Roll call. John?
Yes.
Susan?
Roland, yes. Barbara?
Yes.
Philip?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Tassidy?
Yes.
Julian?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes.
Motion carries. Does anyone have any new business to discuss at this time?
I just had a quick question, uh, regarding the, uh, little free libraries. Did that ever get, did that ever happen? And has there been any?
Um, Josh is working on that, and um, I am touching base with him about that. Um, yeah, the city manager just asked about that today too, so I'm gonna meet with him tomorrow. Um, so.
Yeah, just, just wondering, okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Any patron behavior we need to discuss?
Nope.
Any unfinished business? Well, I will then declare the meeting adjourned. Our next meeting is April thirteenth. And I suspect that that one needs to be in person, because frankly, I don't think that the governor has a continuing emergency order. That is the basis for virtual meetings. So I, I would suggest that the next meeting should, you should plan to attend. If you're uncomfortable with that, we may, perhaps we can arrange for you to attend via virtually, but I think the meeting doesn't. Any further discussion before we declare the meeting adjourned? Guess not, the meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
All right.
See you in person in April.